Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to City Council briefing for Monday, July the 8th. Ms. Fister, could you call the role, please?
Council President Wilkerson.
Present.
Council members Oppone.
Here.
Council member Cathcart.
Present.
Council member Bingle.
Here.
Council member Dillon.
Here.
Council member Klitschke.
Present.
Council member Navarrete.
Here.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
Thank you. Because we have the Airport Board here today, or representation, we're going to go a little bit out of order, out of respect for their time as well. So we're going to hop over to the advanced agenda for July the 15th. And we are going to go to... Come on up. Yeah, there they are. Come on up. Going to go to Resolution 20240065, and we're going to be briefed by Mr. Schultz on that. And Mr. Crowder, welcome.
Thank you, Madam Council President. Good afternoon, members of council. Good afternoon, Garrett. Good to see you as well. We'll run through our slides very quickly that we ran through at the Finance Administration Committee, and happy to answer any questions that council may have. Thank you. Rob?
Good afternoon, council members. Appreciate your time today. I will run through this presentation relatively quickly. We did brief the Finance Administrative Committee on June 24th, so we'll move through these fairly quickly and just make sure committee has, or the council has, the latest in terms of our bond issuance for this. There we go. I think I got it now. Okay. I just wanted to remind council of the financing timeline for this. So we are seeking approval of the joint resolution here in July from the city, as well as the county, which essentially authorizes the issuance and the sale of revenue bonds to support the airport's capital improvement program. We will go through the next couple of months in terms of looking at legal documents, and then prepare for rating agency discussions, as well as closing in October. And so that will be the time that we price and close the bonds is in October. So that's our timeframe for this bond issuance. In terms of the projects itself... Thank you. Just remind the council, we are financing four projects with this. So Concorce C Terminal renovation and expansion, which is underway, moving through that process there. The amount to be included is $80 million. The administrative office building for airport staff, we will include $27 million for that to accommodate staffing needs out at the airport. We will expand our fuel facility by adding a fourth storage tank for that, and then also do some improvements out at Phelps Field. And I'll get into, just very briefly, on each of these as I go through this presentation. This one is Concorce C. You saw this slide before, so I won't really go into a lot of detail on this. This is just an aerial view of what it looks like with the west side open, and we are starting on demolition of the ground load area, as well as expanding on the east side of that. The next one essentially is the rendering, or photo, excuse me, of the interior of Concorce C expanded area. This is Gate C, 7, 8, and 9. And so that is part of, that's really the main project we funded with these revenue bonds that we will be issuing. The next one is administrative office building. That is located, will be located just outside of the terminal at the airport on there, and we are in design right now for that office building. The next one, then, is to do a, add a fourth fuel tank for storage, additional storage capacity out at the airport. So we'll be adding additional storage capacity there, and that project is also underway in terms of design with that project. And the final one is going to be a couple of improvements, potential improvements to Phelps Field area, potentially a, what we call our gateway improvements on Fancher Road between Trent and Rutter, in terms of improving that area there, as well as potentially relocating our maintenance facility, which is on this next slide. And that's essentially just relocating that maintenance facility out of what we will sort of call prime real estate there at Phelps Field, which is more suited for hangar development rather than maintenance facility itself. And if you go to the next slide, that's essentially the proposed location for the maintenance facility. And the next slide just summarizes the financial impact in terms of the sources and uses. So we're looking at issuing an amount of $140 million. 122 of that will fund the projects I just described. The other one will go to a couple of different items in terms of a debt service reserve fund, a capitalized interest cost, as well as the cost of issuance for that. We are looking at issuing 30-year bonds for this. And those ratings there are just assumptions right now in terms of financial modeling. We will go to rating agencies in September to receive the actual ratings for those. But again, we did have a little bit of a conservative interest rate that we have on there in terms of what we've modeled so far. And then the final one is really is just, the final slide is really just ask, oh, sorry, excuse me, Council President Wilkerson, based on recommendation from our committee meeting, we did add a slide in here in terms of economic impact from this. And so we just wanted to highlight that. And so for state economic impact, just from the bond-funded projects, we're looking at potential economic impact of about $400 million over the next couple of years as we move through these projects. In terms of household earnings, you can see the number there. It's about 110 million in household revenue that is generated from these projects. And then for every dollar invested into new construction generates an additional 7.76 jobs for that. And so over the course of these projects, it's going to create nearly 1,500 additional jobs throughout this project. So thank you for that suggestion, Council President. And then the final slide really is just essentially approval of the joint resolution. And so what this joint resolution essentially authorizes the airport to do, and essentially the county, as they are the issuer of the bonds, is to issue and sell revenue bonds that will be done by the county, to be used exclusively for airport purposes in support of our capital improvement program. The Airport Board approved the resolution on June 20th, and we are seeking approval by City Council at next week's July 15th meeting. Went through those relatively quickly, but if you have any questions, happy to answer those now.
Any question from council members? I know Mr. Wright has been working with Rob, so if you have any more additional detailed questions, you could probably phone those through Mr. Wright, and he will have some responses. Thank you all for showing up today.
Of course. Always happy to be here.
Yeah, you can stay, but we'll excuse you if you'd like to.
Okay. Very good. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, Mr. Jones, I think we're ready to go to the current agenda.
Did you want to do your two interviews?
Let's do the two interviews. And this is for the West Quadrant Tiff. And is Liz Wendell in the house or online?
Liz Marley?
Oh, Liz Marley, I'm sorry. Thank you, Liz.
There's Liz and Liz Wendy, I wasn't sure.
Welcome. Why are you interested in this position?
Well, I have lived in the West Central Neighborhood since 2015, and have been involved in neighborhood leadership since I got there. I've been very involved with the West Quadrant Tiff as far as petitioning the city for the extension that was requested back in 2019, and have been very active in the community. I think the West Quadrant Tiff is really a great anti-gentrification tool. I really believe in the power of the neighborhood driving its own development and its own investment, and really would love to continue to be involved in that.
Are you a Spokaneite? Or did you move here?
I moved here from northern Michigan by way of, boy, you see, the Army got involved, so there was some ping-ponging around.
What do you see the biggest challenge for the West Quadrant Tiff, or the biggest opportunity?
That's a good question. I think the biggest challenge is getting the neighborhood involved, and putting the people who live there at the steering wheel. I think we've all seen projects, or been through examples of projects, that were really great ideas at City Hall level, but weren't really engaging the community that lives with them. And the current co-design process with the West Quadrant Tiff has been a complete game changer for us, and I would love to see that continue. So I would say our biggest challenge is really centering power in the hands of those most impacted, and building up this neighborhood from the ground up.
Any other questions for Liz? Thank you. We, I know you'll be meeting with the mayor shortly, and we look forward to voting you on. Thank you. Now is Wendell, Wendy here. Welcome. You can tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in serving.
Thank you. My name is Wendy Wilbur. I am a Spokaneite. I grew up here, but I did leave for 30 years, and spent that time in Anchorage, Alaska, and moved back about three years ago. I've always been deeply involved in my community and committed to giving back, and live in the West Central Neighborhood.
Wendy, I think that's most of us. Lived here, left, and came back. Spokane, Spokane kind of has that hook.
It does, doesn't it?
On a lot of people. I'll ask you the same thing. What do you think the opportunities and challenges are for the West Quadrant Tiff?
I am very blessed to be part of the co-design process, and to work very closely with the neighbors, and watch the power of their understanding of the community to really affect change. I think the biggest challenge with any Tiff is to monitor that gentrification, and the risk of people living there now getting priced out and losing that ability. And I think that's a very important asset to keep our eyes on.
Any questions for Wendy? Councilor McAtcard?
Yeah, I guess, how do you do that? What do you do differently if you see something happening?
Well, I think you really have to pay for, you have to, so I'm a land use planner and a transportation planner. So I think you really have to marry those two things, and you have to pay attention to land use. You have to pay attention to affordable housing, and be very intentional of how you make improvements. So you do want to increase that tax base to generate more money for the neighborhood, but you also have to balance that with the improvements that the neighborhood needs and wants that don't bring in too much. It's not easy.
That is correct. It is not easy. Any other questions for Wendy? Thank you for stepping up.
Thank you.
I know you have a meeting with the mayor as well.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you, and we'll be voting next week. All right.
All right. Well, good afternoon. We'll start with tonight's agenda for July 8th.
Does she want to take a motion to defer those to tonight's?
Yes. I'll entertain a motion.
I'm moved to defer the two appointees to next week.
To a second?
Second.
It's been moved to a second for a one-week deferral. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any noes? Any abstentions? That is deferred. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Jacobi. My fault. All right. So starting for tonight's agenda for the consent agenda, number one, this item will be briefed by Chris Evert.
Good afternoon, council members. Today, I'm seeking approval for the purchase of 66 metal trash receptacles and 66 recycling receptacles from Correctional Industries. These are to replace existing units in the downtown core at a cost of $216,769 and $61. Questions? Yes?
Chris, these are not replaced, they're not replacing the Big Bellies, are they?
That's correct.
They replaced the Big Bellies?
Yeah. Our lease with the Big Belly is expiring, and for cost-saving purposes, we've decided to transition to a different type of unit, so.
Okay. Thank you. Councilor McAtcard?
Yeah, could you just describe the trash can, what it looks like?
It looks just like the Big Bellies currently do, except they don't have telematics that show when it's full, and they don't have the compaction units in them. So if you're familiar with the STA City Line receptacles, they're pretty much exactly like that, so.
Okay. Gotcha.
But they're at a third of the cost of the Big Bellies, so. All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. Item number two, this one will be briefed by Lauren Searle.
Good afternoon, council. This item is for electrical switchgear for Upriver Dam. Interestingly, when we started receiving our electrical vehicles, Upriver Dam didn't have enough power to charge them. It's all based off of the old wiring and electrical that's inside the facility. So this is a review of what needs to be upgraded in order to receive more electrical charge stations out there. This is competitively bid, and would go to Columbia Electric for a total of $238,208. So any questions on that? Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. Items number three and four will be briefed by John Eckhart.
Good afternoon, council. My first item is a value blanket for Oxark. It is to purchase our sulfuric acid solution, which is used in our membrane cleaning process, as well as the neutralization of the waste from the membranes. Are there any questions on that one? Okay. Number four is for a contract for McKinstry. They are going to upgrade our boilers and our burner, our boiler controls and our burners. They were installed in 1990, and in order to get to our emissions requirements and our air standards, we need to upgrade those, and there are no parts available, other than eBay, and they're used. So that's what that one's for. Any questions on that?
I was going to say it's going to be Amazon Prime days pretty soon.
Right, yeah, there we go.
All right, thank you, John. We have items five through eight will be briefed by Rick
Good afternoon, council. Items five and six are both contracts with Pomp's Tire Service here in Spokane. Number five is a value blanket for the purchase of tires and tire-related products for $800,000 a year. Number six is a personal service agreement for tire services for $380,000 a year. Both are two-year contracts with three optional one-year extensions, and both are utilizing the Washington State Department of Enterprise Services contract with Pomp's. Questions on that one?
So this is the original year, or is this year too? This is the original year of this contract?
So we did an extension here a few months ago to get to the end of the DES contract so that we're aligned with them, because their contract was expiring. They have a new contract, so now our contract will align with theirs, so we can go the duration of their contract.
Okay. Thank you.
Item seven is a public works contract with McClintock and Turk for the expansion of the city's CNG fueling site. This will take place in three phases, going from 2024 to 2026. Total expenditure for all phases not to exceed $300,929 and plus tax. This is needed so that we can just keep up with the new RNG trucks that are coming in the solid waste collection fleet. And item eight is a contract renewal, the last contract renewal with Raycom, Inc., for backup electronic equipment and commissioning for city vehicles. This is not to exceed $150,000. Any questions?
Thank you, Rick. Items nine and 10 will both be briefed by Dan Bowler.
Good afternoon. Item nine is a proposed contract with Abidin for epigraphic services for $125,000. Most of the expenditures under this contract are paid by the public works contract for which Abidin is used. Abidin also hosts our website, which our contractors use to review engineering plans online. Item 10 is proposed property purchase of a parcel necessary to construct the proposed roundabout at Freya and Palouse Highway. Hopefully, you saw the exhibit in the briefing paper. Project is planned for 2026. The purchase price is about 20% higher than the appraised value for this land, in large part because this parcel was part of a development that we became aware of when the owner applied for a building permit. So we caught them before they built anything.
All right. Thank you, Dan. Items 11 and 12 will both be briefed by Dave Steele.
Good afternoon, Council President, council members. Number 11, this is an A&E contract with Integris Architecture. They'll be looking at the first three floors of City Hall. You folks are all familiar with the survey work we did, and then Integris did some early work looking at our space utilization. This is kind of step three to that. Taking that data and then conceptualizing, what does that look like on floor number one through three? If those are public-facing, how do they actually lay out? What does the design look like? What's the feel like? What changes can be made? This gets into taking a very brief look at the structure of the building. What changes can you make, you know, as far as structurally, if you wanted to add stairs, or another elevator set, or things like that? It also looks at the HVAC systems to go, okay, how flexible are we there? How much can we do? This is kind of just that little bit deeper dive. It also lays out kind of a schematic and conceptual design concept for people to look at, to go, okay, you know, get some buy-in, get the various players to look at it, and sign off on moving forward with more of a master plan effort. So. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I guess what does that mean for the ombudsman, and the wall, and those conversations that we've been having?
Well, that's part of the conversation was trying to make sure that everybody was aware where we were going with this. The ombudsman, based on the data they put back, they're not necessarily, you know, like a first-floor thing. They're definitely public-facing, but are they one? Are they two? If it's re, if you reconceptualize floors one, two, and three, to where they're all very open, all very public, are they somewhere else? Are they still in that corner? Where do they end up? So we don't want to put anything out there and say, well, that's a lockdown. They don't move until the architects have had a chance to kind of look at it and go, okay. Our perspective is, let's let them show us what we could have, rather than tell them what we won't accept.
So I, just to follow, I guess my concern, frustration, is that it's going to be years before any of these things happen. We don't have any money today. We're not going to have it tomorrow. I certainly don't support borrowing to do these things within City Hall. So I guess I don't understand how we're going to get there, and so what are we going to do in the meantime, is my main concern, because right now, they don't have privacy, and those conversations are overheard by all of the first floor.
I'm very aware of those, you know, the conversations that have happened around the ombudsman. That's not, that's a new conversation. They do have the privacy of their conference room right there, if they do have items that they need to talk about that are extremely private. You are correct. From the time they moved into that area, it created kind of that privacy issue. I'm not privy to, you know, whether the wall conversation is going forward. I know that's a fairly new conversation. It's kind of popped up on our screen. Those walls are modular. They can be moved if the conversation, if both projects go forward, you can install those walls and then move them. We're looking at that same wall system for other places where you could reuse and modify, so.
And I would say too, council, oh, sorry, that we're also having an internal meeting here just shortly regarding this topic, aligned with what Integris is going to do, and then the OPO office, to make sure that we're aligned internally, making sure we're not duplicating services or dollars, and making sure we're being efficient. So we have a meeting lined up, I think, within the next week to address that, the wall.
First, member Dillon.
Yeah, I think, just to piggyback off Councilmember Cathcart's comments, I mean, the appetite clearly with allocation of the ARPA funds was to get, moving on this. And for me, while you might look at some of the data and the metrics, it is one of those situations where, like, if you build it, they will come, right? And I think that that has been part of the challenge with getting foot traffic into the OPO office.
I know Mr. Boston thinks I'm going to call on him. Okay. I want to comment on this. Like, when will this, when will we see something from this study that council can have input on, or some type of idea?
This work is anticipated to take less than 12 weeks. So this is a fairly fast-moving piece. I would anticipate, once contract is passed, you've probably got a month, maybe five weeks, before you have some sort of conceptual, you know, thing to look at, to respond to.
I'm just making a note for Mr. Jacobi Bird to put that on a study session sometime in the future, so. Great.
Awesome. And then item number 12 is the replacement of the electronic components for the fire suppression system at the Police Evidence Building. Those pieces have timed out. We can't get parts for them, very similar to what you heard from the earlier folks. Rather than replacing all of the mechanical and plumbing, this is literally just the electronics. We can pull out the old electronics, install new, cut the price by about 40%, so.
All right. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Boston, don't hide too long up there. We do have an item added, a number 15, request motion to suspend council rules and add the following OPR 2024-0553 regarding memorandum of understanding with the Spokane Police Guild to offer the voluntary
Councilmember Bingle?
I was waiting for somebody to make the motion so I can clarify it, but I just want to make sure that when the motion's made, it's for this specific item.
I'll move to suspend the rules to add item 18, or 15.
You want Mr. Boston to present first, or you want to go?
I have questions first.
Okay, let Mr. Boston give us.
Did somebody second the motion?
Usually, we have to add it to the agenda to discuss it for a second.
So it's been moved seconded by Councilmember Dillon. All those in favor of suspending the rules, Councilmember McAtcard?
Are we, is this one motion to suspend and add?
And add.
Yes.
Okay, then I have questions for Mr. Boston before we get there.
Okay. So let's just vote to suspend the rules at this, let's not combine them. All those in favor of suspending the rules in purpose of adding this to agenda?
Wait, wait. What was the motion, though? We'd have to change the motion.
The motion was to suspend the rules and add this memorandum of understanding to the consent agenda for tonight.
I have a question for Councilmember Cathcart. Could we just add it to the agenda, discuss it, and then change the agenda item if necessary, or defer it, or anything after it's added?
Well, I guess with permission from the chair, I would just love to just ask a question of, and it might satisfy my concern. So book one or book two at the end of the year, is, after this is done, if we've, if 25 or 20 members of SPD have retired, is our full total allotted number of positions in SPD going to be reduced by 20, 25 positions, or will it be what it is now? In other words, is there going to be a permanent reduction in force coming out of this?
Yeah, I don't think there's any intention to have a permanent reduction in force. Those positions, there's no discussions that were happening internally, that those positions are going off the books permanently. Obviously, as we know, with recruitment and retention, et cetera, that there is going to be opportunity for savings, depending on how quickly we can get other officers on board. But there has been no discussions within administration that I'm privy to, that is talking about pulling those positions off.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Councilmember Bingle, do you still have a question, or your hand's just
No, sorry.
Okay. All right. So back to the motion now.
The motion was to suspend the rules and add item 15 to the agenda.
It was seconded by Councilmember Dillon. All those in-
Just quick clarification on this. The suspension of the rules is specifically for this item. That's it.
Correct. All those in favor of suspension of rules, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any noes? Any abstentions? The rules are suspended. Are you moving to add?
I, the motion was to suspend and add.
And add.
So did both.
Do you need any? I guess I have to brief it. This is exactly what we were talking about. This is for 20 officers within the guild, five lieutenants and captains to receive salary savings plans, of which is a part of both of their collective bargaining agreements. It's an MOU that's slightly changed to just- It's an MOU that's slightly changed to just support an accelerated timeline as we're going into the 25, 26 biennial budget.
Any other questions for Mr. Boston? All right, thank you very much.
All righty, so now moving into the legislative agenda, we do have a number of special budget ordinances. The first one, ordinance C36521, we're requesting a motion to defer the following item indefinitely as the budget adjustments are addressed in special budget ordinance C36540.
I'll entertain a motion to defer indefinitely.
So moved.
Second.
Moved, it's been moved by Councilmember Klitschke, seconded by Councilmember Cathcart. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any noes? Abstentions? That is deferred indefinitely.
All right, so now the second budget, special budget ordinance, and then with a number of the follow. First one is ordinance C36537. This will be briefed by Matt Boston.
So these are the SBOs, and I apologize, I'm scrolling through your agenda to see which ones are which, but four different SBOs, all which encompass different funds. They're grouped by the fund that they represent. There's general funds, special revenue funds, enterprise funds, and then I forget what the last one is.
Water wastewater fund.
Water wastewater should be under enterprise one. Apologies, but these are the ones that we've talked about pretty extensively. We talked, we, I believe, introduced them in the June finance meeting, June finance and administration meeting, then followed up with the June budget meeting, study session. We briefed these again during the July, or the June, sorry. The first June meeting was the May meeting. Then you had another finance and administration at the tail end of June, so that was the true June finance and administration meeting. Nothing has been changed on the administration's end. Is there any questions that I can answer on any of the four?
So that was ordinance 537 under water wastewater fund. That one's, I think, we're, no issues on that one.
Okay.
If we go to ordinance 538?
I have a motion.
Is it my motion?
No.
I think I'm going to take my motion first.
My motion includes your motion.
Okay, Councilmember Zepon.
All right, I move to adopt the Zepon proposed amendment.
Second.
And I'll speak to it.
Was there a second?
I seconded.
Okay, Councilmember Klitschke. Councilmember Zepon.
Yeah, I'll speak to this. So this includes the Wilkerson proposed amendment, which pays for the election for redistricting from last year. That was outstanding balance that council never paid for, so it includes that part. It also includes funding for legal services to put to rest some issues that have arisen in external boards and commissions to make sure that the city of Spokane and our residents are being represented fairly. And then it then also moves the additional funding surplus to traffic calming fund instead of into the reserves.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah. I think, as most people imagine, I'm not going to support this. We have almost a $50 million deficit overall, 20 to 30 million in the general fund alone. Transferring money from the general fund to another specialty fund just does not make sense. However, that being said, it is absolutely critical that we get, because I think sort of the spirit behind this is because of some money that was allocated for some certain intentions that have not been fulfilled. And so I think there needs to be a plan, there needs to be some collaboration between the administration and council on moving forward on that, but we cannot transfer these dollars out of reserve. I mean, our reserves are depleted. We had $20 million in there, more than $20 million just a couple of years ago, and now we're down to very small amounts. And so the idea of transferring out money, the impacts on our bond rating, it's just not, it's not practical. It doesn't make any sense right now that we would do this. And if we desperately need money in traffic calming, there's other ways we can figure this out rather than transferring out of the general fund. So no, I'm not going to support this. We have got to put our focus on solving this budget deficit, and, I mean, we're talking about another sales tax right now. So, I mean, there is real reasons why we need to be much more fiscally responsible just overall with everything that we do.
Councilmembers. Pah.
Yeah, I'll speak to that. I proposed moving it into the traffic calming fund because there was money taken out of the traffic calming fund that was moved into the general fund that was to pay for police services essentially. That is not being used in the way that the traffic calming fund intended, so those were never originally general fund dollars. They were always traffic fund dollars. So if there's extra money from the general fund, it should go back to the specialty fund because that's where it originated from. So I don't view these as general fund dollars, but they were always traffic calming fund dollars and should go back to the traffic calming fund.
Any other council commentary? Councilmember Klitschke?
When I worked at Futurewise, I was part of the citizens groups that supported the creation of the traffic calming fund, and it is very important to all of our constituents that not only do we invest seriously in traffic calming because of the danger on our streets, but also that we are good stewards of our own policies and what citizens have asked us to do. This was created as a dedicated fund for traffic calming, and we need to be working towards not rating that anymore for the general fund, not the other direction.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, I guess the last question is, I mean, I think personally, I feel like we violated ordinance last year when we did not put additional dollars into our reserves. I think that was required. I don't believe we ever took a vote to suspend that policy or anything else. So I guess my question is, how would this, how does this affect the reserves overall? Especially as we think about the end year and what's required by ordinance in terms of refilling those reserves?
It's, from a legal perspective, I'd have to talk to Mr. Piccolo about that, but I mean, without a doubt be in violation if what we're doing is we're transferring a surplus out. And one thing that I do just want to clarify is the money that's coming from traffic calming to the general fund hasn't come into the general fund. It is sitting there as a budget line to transfer over. So, you know, to avoid, I guess, the difficulty of transferring back and forth and back and forth, you know, it might just be easier to say, okay, let's just take the delta of what we're saying and reduce it off of the traffic calming transfer if that's the ultimate goal of this group instead of transferring it back and forth. But we'd have to, we'd have to do a legal analysis on that, and I can get that information. I could talk to Mike about it and get that information out to him.
Wouldn't it essentially be essentially doing the same thing if it, we're just going to transfer it all later, transferring back is essentially the same thing?
Yeah, no, I agree with that. I mean, I, the challenge that I have is that, I mean, A, like Councilmember Cathcart said, is we do have an ordinance in place that is intended to rebuild the reserves based on, when I was working with you all in your office, to say, okay, you know, we saw a huge deficit within the general fund years on end. You know, we saw it in 2021, and it just kept compounding, and so there was a consorted effort of saying, okay, let's make sure we put some guardrails to not only shore up those walls, but also to rebuild them. Yes, it is, and I think during the conversations that we were having last year during the budget creation, I think a lot of the, the challenge that people were having is having one fund support another fund. If, you know, again, I totally agree with you. It started with traffic calming, moving funds out of traffic calming into the general fund, and that was, that was the start of it. I don't think it's any one person's fault. I think with the change in administration and leadership that were involved, I think there were promises that were made, and unfortunately, they fell by the wayside, and we found that out, you know, during the June, the June public safety meeting when we got the report. So I think if we start working, I mean, we have so many special revenue funds that are pretty unique to the city of Spokane in terms of they could be housed in the general fund, but we have now broken apart so many different general fund costs into special revenue funds, and we parse them out for specific things instead of just looping them all into the general fund. Do we want to go down that road of where we're just transferring in and out of the general fund? That's a question for you all to answer, and completely within your authority to do so.
Yeah, my last comment is that the traffic calming fund is guided by state law, which has requirements and guide rails around it. That is not the intended use that, I would say that we are using the traffic calming fund right now. So this gets us more back in line to the intended use by state law.
Councilmember Cathcart?
And to that end, I would love if we could get a legal memo that demonstrates what was just articulated. I mean, I think that would help with quite a bit of, you know, moving, moving pieces around going forward.
It has been moved and seconded. There's a poem proposed amendment. All those in favor of the proposed amendment, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any noes?
No.
No.
The ayes have it, that passes.
All right, so any other questions? So we had the two with the Fleet Service Fund, SBO, and then also the Public Safety Personnel and Crime Reduction Fund. Any additional questions there for Matt?
What is going to happen to that crime analyst position? Is that permanently going away?
That is permanently being removed, based on leadership recommendation of that position not needing to be on the books anymore. Yep.
All right, thank you, Matt. Next, SBO is ordinance C36542. This will be briefed by Mike Ormsby.
Thank you, Mr. Jones and members of the council. This particular proposed ordinances was presented at the June Finance and Administration Committee meeting. We discussed the process. This is part of the regular process suggested by the council previously about reviewing these in a systematic way and coming forward once a quarter, and these are the proposed range changes that were, that were determined and that we have previously presented. I'd be happy to answer any additional questions if there are any. Great, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. Now, moving on to the resolutions and final reading ordinances, we have resolution 2024-0055, be briefed by Eric Poulsen, and we do have one proposed amendment on this.
Thank you, council. This is the comprehensive citywide federal agenda update that you were briefed on at Finance in June. And two weeks ago, there are a couple minor language changes that we made to reflect feedback that we received from council, essentially acknowledging the impact of regulations on waste-to-energy ratepayers and calling out the need for housing on base and near base at Fairchild to bolster our housing stock inside the city. So those are the fundamental changes, and here to answer any questions about the rest of the document.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, I will also move the Cathcart amendment for 0055.
It's been moved through a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions for Eric, Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, I was just going to add, you know, very minor tweaks to the language, and just appreciate Eric and Chris for helping to draft the language.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Cathcart. Certainly the waste to energy has been forefront of us, and I was telling Eric, I can't remember a year where we have not had something on our federal legislative agenda regarding Fairchild Air Force Base, and housing certainly is critical. So it's been moved and seconded to adopt the Cathcart proposed amendment. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any noes? Abstentions? That is passed.
All right, thank you. Now into resolution 2024-0062. This will be briefed by Councilmember Zepon.
Oh, this is the resolution on the side box. I actually moved to defer that for two weeks.
It's been moved to defer through a second?
Second.
And I'll speak to why. Haven't had time to really discuss with Public Works what this program would look like and how it would work. So two weeks will give us more time to talk about it. There is a traffic calming committee meeting tomorrow that should be able to get more discussion about it.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, there's, the low-income piece, I think, needs to be fleshed out or preferably removed because I think the second portion of that actually works for the whole city. But the other piece is the $500,000 that this allocates. I don't think we've actually discussed a dollar amount in traffic calming. We did discuss the concept, but to my knowledge, we haven't discussed a dollar amount, and so I think we should talk about that in traffic calming.
All right, I don't have a calendar. Two weeks is what date?
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second, sorry.
That's deferred to July 22nd.
Yeah.
All right.
I don't think we actually voted on that, did we?
Yes, we're getting ready to vote right now, Mr. Bingle, councilman. All in favor of deferral for two weeks, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any noes? Abstentions? That is deferred. Thank you.
All right, next we have resolution 2024-0063 with accompanying OPR 2024-534. This will be briefed by John Eckhart.
So this one is for a sole source for Whitney Company, equipment company. They provide our ISCO flow monitoring equipment that we have at the wastewater plant and also in the sewer that we use everywhere else, and it's just hard to find anywhere else but them. So, any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Now, next we have resolution 2024-0064, will be briefed by Eldon Brown.
I think Jacoby's going to bring up a map for me. This is one we did talk about back in the June Urban Experience Committee meeting. It's an alley there. Centennial Mills is located on the south side of Springfield. This alley's between Lee and Stone from Broadway to Springfield. As you can see on the map, it's our little crosshesterian red. It's isolated, it doesn't have any extension to the alley either north or south, so it looks like a pretty good candidate to actually vacate. There are no city utilities in that alley, but we did have Prop Yor that owns the two lots on that northeast corner of the alley, basically the southwest corner of Stone and Broadway. This gentleman has never signed the actual petition. My understanding, he's talked to one of our staff members about this, and he just wants to maintain the status quo and is really not interested in this vacation, but we did certainly get more than the 66 and 2/3% required for the signatures on the petition to start the process. So the people on the west side that really were proposing this alley vacation want to proceed and have a hearing to it. I have no idea if this gentleman will show up and testify against it, but we've had a conversation with him that he just would like to keep it like it is. And he actually would not be cut off if we actually did vacate this alley. He owns that, like you say, the southwest corner, which would be the northeast corner of the alley, and he would have access to, actually, he would get half the alley if it was vacated on there, so he could kind of control somebody not blocking it off. Plus, we recommend that you, we retain easements in there for Vista, Comcast, and Lumen, so it's not intended to actually be a blocked-off alley. But I'm just giving you a heads up that he might show up at the hearing. We're trying to set the hearing for August 12th on this particular vacation, and from a staff perspective, we would recommend it. Like I say, there is no, it's not cutting off any extensions of alley either north or south. It's an isolated scenario. It's not paved, it's an unimproved alley, and I think people are just trying to actually do it from a security perspective and just add on to their property for development purposes, too, the people that would like to see the vacation. But I did want to give you a heads up that we might have an opponent.
And so Eldon, who would pay the cost of the vacation? Would all the people who support the vacation contribute to the cost?
We just gathered in from whoever actually pays the amount. It would be a $17,000, I think we had 17,600, and so people would have to pay that amount. We don't care who it comes from out there, but it does go back half to each side to where it came from unless people make an actual deal with somebody to say, I want to buy your portion of this alley. That's kind of a separate thing. We just take the money in for the actual overall amount, and then they work out their own side deals as to who ends up with the property when it goes to the county assessor once it's fully vacated.
Thank you.
Anyway, that's the circumstance to it, if you've got any questions. Thanks.
Thanks, Eldon. Now we have ordinance C36532 and 33. These were previously briefed before the holiday, but Mike Piccolo is here if there's any additional questions.
I was just going to say, this has been briefed to the county city council committee and two weeks ago at first reading, so if you have no questions, we'll proceed to the next.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mike. Next, we have ordinance C36534. This will be briefed by Councilmember Dylan with a proposed amendment as well. This will be briefed by Councilmember Dylan with a proposed amendment as well.
Yeah. We heard this in public safety. We had a first reading on June 24th. This is the Gun Violence Prevention Ordinance, really does a kind of three core components. Bans discharging a firearm in the city with some exemptions. Clarifies language around open carry at city and publicly owned buildings, and then adds new language around forfeiture to include magazines and ammunition that can be destroyed or repurposed for training. The amendment that we're adding, this came from some feedback from City Legal to be more consistent with state law. So it adds a penalty clause around the unlawful discharge of a firearm and then incorporates the defense language that exists under state law related to the Second Amendment or if someone, or the right to bear arms. And yeah, that's about it.
Councilman McCaffrey. Is there a motion on the floor?
Oh, yeah. I would move forward to adopt the Dylan amendment.
Second. Councilman McCaffrey.
It's not related to the amendment. It's related overall, so I'll wait till after.
So it has been moved and seconded to adopt the Dylan amendment. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes?
No.
Any abstentions? That was two noes, abstentions? Motion, the amendment passes. Now, Councilman McCaffrey.
Yeah, I just want to point out, I mean, we have heard from Legal. They have not actually done a full review of this. They've reviewed some components of it, and for them to have the time, it would take two weeks. I, I don't plan to make a motion to defer. I, I think my vote is pretty much set regardless, but I do want to raise this because Legal has not actually reviewed the entirety of this proposal.
All right.
Okay. And then we have ordinance C three six five three five and three six.
Sorry, I, I actually do want to make the, the motion to defer for, until July 22nd.
So you're making the motion to defer?
Yeah, I want to, I want to, you know, I'll make the motion. I'll speak to it afterward.
I'll second for discussion.
Is the move?
Yeah. So what I want to know is I want to hear from Legal because we don't have a good memo from Legal yet. I know that they've been asked for one. We haven't been able to get one, or not that we haven't been able to get one. There's just a lot that's going on. We haven't had the time to be able to digest it yet. And I was speaking with our legal department today, and there, I think there are some, some issues with this and maybe some conflicts. And so being able to get that, I think, is not only good for us to understand what we're passing, but I think good for the community to understand what is, what is coming. So I think it's important for us to defer just for a couple of weeks, get that legal memo, and then be able to move forward.
Do you want to speak to it?
Yeah, I'll speak against deferral. You know, we, while there might not be that kind of standard of the, you know, full legal analysis, this wasn't policy that was developed in a vacuum. We did have feed, feedback and input from day one, and a lot of those edits are, in fact, incorporated in this final ordinance. You know, if there are any adjustments that need to be made, I think it's relatively technical and we can make them.
So it's been moved and seconded for a deferral for two weeks. All those in favor of the two week deferral, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, say no.
No.
The request for a deferral fails.
So ordinance C three six five three five and three six, I believe these were both previously briefed as well before the holiday, but Melissa Owens is here if there's any additional question.
So I did put together a couple of slides for you all if you had any questions or needed a few little bullet points for your six o'clock session. If not, I just wanted to make sure I came back with detail for Councilmember Dylan on the number of units associated with Leita Glenn Residential Community specifically. So the preliminary approval on that proposal was for 157 leased spaces. We're currently in the process of reviewing the final PUD and manufactured home park proposal, and that came back in at 138, so 19 fewer, again, due to some steep slope issues and having to move a few of those leased lots around. So I'm happy to go through the little slides I put together with the bullet points, or I appreciate the time I already have. We don't necessarily need to go through them.
Just had one kind of quick question. We did receive an email from William last Wednesday about how this kind of pertains to the moratorium and seeking an exemption request. And, you know, my understanding, of course, is that it's already exempted. This has been in the works for a while, and yeah.
So the proposal for Leita Glenn actually didn't include any subdivision. So it was strictly for the PUD overlay zone. And again, that's where you're going to see the R1 zoning designation retained, the residential low land use retained, but then it gets that overlay of the zone. And then the manufactured home park didn't create any new parcels. It was a conditional use permit that was also a type three along with that PUD overlay. And so the way that we've interpreted the moratorium in our offices within the Development Services Center is that the subdivision proposal would be a new application subject to the moratorium. But I'm happy to have a separate conversation with you, and if we need to get legal interpretation on how that might be impacted. My understanding is if they were to bring something forward, they're not, they wouldn't be proposing more units. Essentially, they would just be trying to convert those leased lots that they had, or leased spaces that they had identified during the preliminary PUD and manufactured home process into fee simple lots so that you could have homeownership on those individual lots. It sounds like they're running into some issues with financing, those interest rates being even higher when the owner of that manufactured home does not also own the land underneath.
Thank you.
Anything else for me? All right. Thanks so much for your time.
So that concludes the agenda for tonight, July 8th.
So I'll entertain a motion to approve the current agenda for this evening.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for approval of the current council agenda. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes? That is passed.
No.
It was one. Said no.
Yes, Councilmember Bingle said no.
All right. So now moving to the advanced agenda for July 15th. Moving to the consent items, we have consent items one through four that will all be briefed by David Payne, who is online.
Good afternoon, council president, council members. The first item is for purchase from Pure Cell Technologies of Princeton, Ontario, Canada for conveyor skirt belting on our new ash system. The cost of this contract is $61,690.60, including tax. The second item is a lease extension with Kenworth Sales of Spokane for the utilization of a semi tractor that we've had waiting delivery of the one that we ordered last year. It's due in sometime this summer. Hopefully, we'll get that off rent. The total annual cost added to this contract is $71,927.04. The next item is a contract amendment with Gerard Chimney Company of St. Louis, Missouri for stack repairs and inspection at the waste energy facility. During the fall outage last year, we identified some items that needed to be repaired during their inspection. This time around, they found some more, and we took this opportunity to actually paint the stack, give it a facelift. The total cost of this contract with the $275,000 additional cost, which we moved, we acquired from projects that we are either canceling, deferring, or modifying, the total cost of this contract is $500,000. Last item is a consultation agreement with HTR Engineering of W. Washington for estimation and engineering support services related to our new ash house building and expansion to include metals and, or ferrous metals and non-ferrous metals. This contract will not exceed $70,026 plus tax. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, David. And then we have item number five, who will be briefed by Connor Thorne, and he is online as well.
Hey, good afternoon, council. Thank you for your time today. This item is related to a contract renewal with Loomis through the state of Washington to support our cash handling needs and cash safeguarding procedures within our cash handling policy. This is a two-year contract with an option to renew after two years. Value of the contract is $65,000 per year. Any questions?
Not seeing any. Thank you, Connor. Now, moving into resolutions and final reading ordinances, we have ordinance C three six one two zero, and this is back again for Eldon Brown.
This project, we've been working on for three years, I think, to actually get to the final reading of the vacation. It's on Adam Street, south of Third Avenue to the Oyster right away at I-90, kind of where we're at with that process. We had a meeting here probably about a month ago now where we think we got to an understanding of how we're going to address parking along the west curb line of Adams in there right now. We're trying to get it striped as a fire lane and then have some parking access on the very south end. Right now, we have attorneys for both sides, for the VOA and for the Starlight Automotive business on the east side. They're working on the final details of an agreement. So it's on next Monday for final action. I may have to defer it a little bit depending on how well they come up with their final agreement right now, but I think they're just working on details right now. They're trying to make sure they have access easements back and forth along the street once it's vacated, and they also need to have a 20-foot wide fire lane in there. And so they're just trying to work out any final fencing, any final access easements, and addressing the parking scenario with a formal agreement, which we did require back in 2021. We said we need to have this agreement in place before we do the final reading. So that's what they're working on as we speak. So anyway, I'll be hopefully back here next Monday so we can do final reading. If not, I will be trying to defer it maybe a week or two, depending on how long it takes them to do the final reading. Be happy to answer any other questions about it.
Eldon has promised me that this will be done before my term is up.
I swear.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Eldon. Now, moving into the first read and ordinances, we have ordinance C three six five four three that will be briefed by Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, and well, it's been briefed, it's been briefed before. This just expands the, the defined holidays in our code, but I was going to make a motion, actually, that we defer first reading to the 22nd with final reading, the, I think, August 8th. So we could allow our budget director some time to take a look at the numbers and just get us back some better detailed information on this.
Council President?
Second.
There is a request from the administration to actually defer it at least a month to August 12th to sort through some of the collective bargaining issues.
I'm, I'm amenable to that. I'll, I'll modify my motion to August, what, what day, 12th?
August 12th. At least August 12th. So.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to defer to August 12th. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Noes? We're good.
All right. And then the next ordinance, C three six five four four, will also be briefed by Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, this is basically a modest tweak to our existing camping code, which, you know, obviously with the change by, in the ruling from the Supreme Court, you know, we have a lot more flexibility now. But effectively, this just removes the prohibition on enforcement from the viaducts outside of downtown. So it allows for enforcement in kind of that east, that area between East Central and Chief Gary in particular. That's one. It expands. So right now, it defines enforcement around congregate shelters at three blocks. This changes the three blocks to 1,000 feet to be in alignment with Prop One, which was 1,000 feet for those enforcement measures. And then it also expands that definition so that instead of just congregate shelter, which isn't well-defined or anything else in there, it would be for more for comprehensive support services. As we know, there is a big push for more services in the neighborhoods themselves, and so this is a tool for us to help enforce outside of the downtown core. And yeah, I'll leave it there.
So, Mr. Wright, you share with me, we were talking about the definition of congregate shelters. What did we insert into this? What language did we use as a definition, or did we?
We inserted a reference to RCW 71, if I can't remember, that encompassed a lot of behavioral health facilities. So in addition to just saying social services, we also incorporated a statutory definition as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, I had a question if there's been a look into the fiscal impact around this.
I, I mean, there, no, there is not. We can ask our budget director to do that, but I mean, the answer would be the budget impact is whatever time our officers spend enforcing, and so really, it's a tool, and they can enforce all the time, and, and so it'd be just the run-of-the-mill use because we're not trying to push overtime for enforcement.
Yeah. I'm just wondering if it might be better to holistically look at sit-in line encampments in Prop One. Councilmember Dylan suggested earlier today about doing a study session around that so that we can have a holistic idea around this. It seems like things have been piecemealed together right now, and it, this is just one more, not saying that this is necessarily bad, but just that it adds to it, and it might be more beneficial to look at a holistic view instead.
Yeah, no, I, I completely get that, and I think one of the issues that we're dealing with right now is the fact that the lang, our camping language was built around Boise Martin, and, and that means it's very kind of permission-based and, and, you know, narrowly-focused, whereas realistically, we could actually have a, I think, a more thoughtful, broader camping policy now that we can enforce citywide without any restrictions. So I, I'm open to that sort of conversation around a broader discussion, but I think, you know, right now, as we are seeing this sort of immediate push for more resources to be moved into the neighborhoods, I, I do think that we have to, to act and, and move with some speed because there's going to be more and more impacts in those neighborhoods. And while there is some opportunity for, well, I'll just, I'll leave it there for now.
You have a commentary? Councilmember Klitschke?
Oh, and then Councilmember Klitschke, then Councilmember Bingle.
Sorry. If we do this holistic discussion, then my question will probably get answered, but I was just wondering if you're including those signage requirements. Is this exactly the same?
It's exactly the same. It's just those little tweaks that I, I referenced. So 1,000 feet instead of three blocks, removing downtown is for viaducts.
Can we include, like, how much this would cost in part of that discussion, or do we need to have two briefings, one in finance and one in public safety? I think we need to be realistic with ourselves about all of this.
Yeah, I think you can talk comprehensively, whether it's public safety or final.
Okay. Good.
I think you can talk comprehensively.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bingle.
Yeah, I think it's what Councilmember Cathcart just said. With the scattered site model, I think it's important to get this going as quickly as possible because it's going to be out into more neighborhoods rather than where it has been concentrated downtown. So I think it's important to get it going. When it comes to the holistic discussion on it, I think that's totally, you know, a good thing. At the same time, I'm remembering all the arguments that came up from when Councilmember Cathcart and I did propose quite an extensive and holistic look at, you know, anti-camping laws and sit-in lie laws. And I'm remembering the discussion being, well, where, will they go? You know, how are we going to enforce? We don't have jail space. I don't see any of those arguments changing in this, in this discussion, but, you know, maybe I'll be pleasantly surprised here. And when it comes to the cost of enforcement, you know, I, I understand why we'd want to know that. I haven't heard really the cost of enforcement, you know, for, you know, for catching thieves or for anything else like that. And so I do wonder why, you know, when it comes to this specific law, this, these specific sets of laws that were so focused on fiscal impact when it comes to just enforcing the laws and keeping our city safe. It blows my mind. I don't know why we keep talking about it with these specific laws. We don't ask about a ton of others, but I think it's good for us to get this going right away. And as a matter of fact, Councilmember Cathcart and I, maybe we need to dust off the old, the old ordinance, bring it forward again now that the argument of Boise is no longer valid.
Councilmember Dylan.
Yeah, just a quick question. How does this kind of relate? How does this kind of relate to good neighbor agreements? I mean, with sort of the education around these, the scatter site model, those going into the neighborhoods?
Well, it's interesting. I'm actually trying to work on another ordinance with Chris that kind of relates to that, but it's really complicated. So the existing code actually says, and this is one of the things I think needs to change, it's only shelters owned by the city where there's those sorts of requirements. And, and so that's a problem in terms of the citing requirements. And then the good neighbor agreements piece, I believe we only did that through a resolution. And in the, there's a reference to it in the SMC, but it's not, it's not strong enough language. It doesn't, it's not mandatory enough. And so I just think we need to strengthen that piece of it as well. And, and we've also had some complications, and we'd love to have more legal discussion over just what is enforceable within a good neighbor agreement and what's not, what, what is doable. But those are really important and very helpful, as long as we can actually abide by them and follow them.
Councilmember, do you still have another comment?
No, sorry, my bad.
Yeah, I just wonder if this would be effective currently, as is with the current resources. I think we heard today that it just depends on deploying resources, and we can add things, but without the resources, without the fiscal impact and the idea, I don't know if it achieves what the goal is, which I think the goal is, I think everyone appreciates the goal and supports the goal of trying to mitigate the impact. So I, you're interested, I think, if we postpone this to middle August gives us some time to work on it and achieve the goal without just putting out something that might not be enforced.
I'm, yeah, I'm open to a reasonable deferral for more, more discussion and look at, at some of the specifics.
What about, August 12th is our first day back. Is that, maybe August 19th gives us one week to be ready for it after?
Well, I mean, I think we could do first reading on August 12th and then final reading on the 19th.
Councilmember Dylan?
Yeah, just one other, I guess, addendum to that is, you know, out of public safety today, and it just, for me, it feels like we have so many loose threads. So we have Prop 1, we have sit-in lie, we have pedestrian interference, and now, you know, this proposal too. I really do think, you know, again, thinking through this holistically, how do we kind of pull this all together with a discussion in how to move forward and have it be, implement a lot of these, you know, these proposals? And I think timing-wise, it would be good to pull us all together before we move forward.
I'll just say, it's really confusing to the community, because there are expectations of what we're enforcing, and now there's so many layers. All good, there just seems to be some, so much overlap as to which law, when the officer is enforcing it, does it fall under? And will, or have we educated the community as to really what the law is? Because we know a lot of it is not understanding and a perception of what officers should be doing on the streets right now. And I think that's really challenging going forward. So I would, I would be supportive of the first reading till the 12th. If somebody wants to make that motion.
I, I will, well.
Councilmember Bingle.
Yeah, so respectfully, guys, this, this sounds like a lot of excuses to me.
You fade it out, Councilmember Bingle.
Wants to, say what?
You just fade it out for a minute. Repeat.
I'm sorry, I said, yeah, okay. Respectfully, this feels like a lot of excuses from a council that doesn't want these laws to go forward. You know, we, we can have conversations till we're blue in the face. Things I hear from the majority on this all the time is we can implement it, and then we can always change it if it's wrong. I mean, I hear that all the time. But if it's going to get deferred, I mean, there's, it is what it is. I would say if we're going to do a fiscal impact, then what needs to happen as well is what is the fiscal impact? What is the cost of doing nothing? Because currently, there are serious challenges for businesses wanting to invest in this community that has lost revenue, those are lost jobs, those are lost wages, there's a lot of, there's a fiscal impact for us to do nothing as well. There's a fiscal impact in understanding what it's like when, you know, not just officers are responding, but what's happening with the emergency rooms and fire and everything like that. If we're going to do a fiscal impact, do the fiscal impact of what this is going to be, but also there must be a fiscal impact on what will it be if we do nothing, because that is a serious consideration. And specifically now, since we do not have the ability to say, well, you know, Boise won't allow us to enforce, now that we've been told by our legal department, there's no legal reason for us to not enforce, we are seriously open up to lawsuits for doing nothing, in the same way we saw in Seattle, that we've seen in other big cities around the country. And so for us to continue to make excuses as to reasons why we don't want to be implementing these things is also costing the city money, and that needs to be understood.
I'll go to Councilmember Cathcart, and I'll go to Councilmember Dylan.
Yeah, just real fast, one other point to just maybe throw in, into the mix, and it's great that we might have this holistic discussion, but Prop 1 specifically is not changeable until, I, don't quote me, but I think it's December of '27 before that can be touched by council and modified. It's a three-year mandatory requirement that you can't touch it if it's passed by the voters. So that's not going to go away, that's not going to change, that's going to remain on the books barring a Supreme Court ruling, state Supreme Court ruling. So I just want to make sure that that's known, that we can't actually change those laws if there's some thoughts regarding some more holistic effort.
Councilmember Dylan.
Yeah, and I just, you know, just want to push back on that a little bit. We heard very clearly from Legal today that Prop 1 is enforceable, and there are absolutely, you know, I just think that there's this missing gap, there's this gap between the idea of Prop 1 and the reality versus the expectations, the deliverables, what our officers can and can't do, not necessarily because of what the law states, but because of capacity. Getting more clarity around what this looks like for calls where, you know, if there is someone within 1,000 feet of a park or a daycare versus, you know, what is someone who's unhoused and, and walking down the street, and they're not breaking the law, and they are getting the police called on them? And what does that actually look like, kind of in this, this data that we're looking at for, for implementation? So I don't think that a deferral is necessarily, you know, a deflection or, you know, us kind of coming up with excuses. I really do feel like, you know, we have to pull all of this together, and I don't want to speak for Councilmember Cathcart, but, you know, with this ordinance too, kind of putting that in the mix of, okay, again, here is another tool. And I totally hear you, the fiscal impact, you know, the cost of, of doing nothing is inexcusable. We have to do something. But also, what does that mean for wraparound services, pulling in our providers, and making sure there really is some kind of unity and cohesion around this hodgepodge of different laws that we have?
Councilmember Klitschke.
Similar to what Councilmember Dylan said, right now, we can enforce things. Like, we've gotten a memo, there are not barriers to enforcing things. However, this is a situation where we're going to have to triage. We have limited resources, and I think this is what kind of calls do we prioritize? And this is a discussion about how we spend the limited resources we have. It's not, are we not going to enforce these things? We've been enforcing these things. And when, when we ask for the fiscal impacts, that's how much it costs the city's budget. The economic impacts, I think we all know are real, and no one's denying that not addressing this issue has economic impacts, but it's not the same thing as what we're literally paying to get these things done. How far can we spread this little bit of butter that we have on this giant piece of toast?
Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, and, and I think it'd be great at this discussion to have PD there to talk about, you know, how they triage some of those calls, you know, certain, do they prioritize, especially within just camping, do they prioritize certain areas? Obviously, they've got all their other calls that probably take priority, but having them come and maybe give a little presentation on what that looks like would probably be very educational for us as well as the, the community. I will, I will make a motion to defer first reading of this ordinance to August 12th, with the final reading then occurring on August 19th.
Second.
It's been moved in second to defer till August 12th. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, any noes? Abstention? That passes.
All right, a couple more items here. We have a one item under special, special consideration for a city council letter to Governor Inslee. Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, very briefly, this is just a letter to encourage expedited rulemaking on SB 6175. We're not voting on it for another week, and so if there's any input on the language within it, very open to that. And yeah, I mean, I just think we just got to get this policy in place.
Councilmember Bingle.
Yeah, I think we heard today that there's been a lot of efforts to work with the Department of Revenue from the city, and our legislative delegation and others have been working a lot to get this ball rolling. I believe that Steve said the 23rd is when they're going to have a hearing. July 23rd is when they're going to have a hearing about interim rules, and it sounds like they've been very supportive of the city, and I worry us escalating this could damage some relationships at the Department of Revenue that people are working on, and they've been supportive of us. I, I kind of think it might be better to look at doing a letter after that, to see if the process is still necessary, instead of doing it before that.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, I just, I don't think this does any harm. I, I don't think the language is harsh. I think it's very direct, and it's merely asking the governor, hey, you've got the power, please encourage the rulemaking to be expedited, and just lays out the case of why this is important to Spokane, especially with our housing, ongoing housing crisis. So I, I don't think, I don't think this needs to be deferred, and I think if we passed it next week, it'd be a week in advance of that meeting, which would be great, I think, to have that in hand. I, you know, if, if no council members want to sign it, that's, that's fine. I will still do it. I will just say I don't believe the governor will care all that much for my one signature, so.
All right, and then we do, oh, I mean, I, I do think that we, since I've been on council, we haven't sent a letter to the governor like this. So I do feel like it's an escalation, and just worry about maintaining those relationships. And so I'm going to make a motion to defer it for a month to August 19th.
Motion to defer to August 19th. Is there a second? All right, that deferral fails.
The motion fails. All right, so we do have one hearing, the hearing set by the emergency ordinance, C.36522, that was amended and passed on May 20th around the moratorium. I don't know if there's any additional commentary around this. Okay. All right, so that concludes the advanced agenda for July 18th, or 15th, excuse me.
Entertained a motion to approve the advanced agenda.
Do we not have to vote on the, the hearing at all? Is that just here? There's no?
Mr. Wright, do we have to vote on it?
Says adopt finding.
You're just voting on the ordinance tonight. I mean, is that the question?
Yeah, I, yeah, we, we do vote tonight, though, correct? It's not, okay.
Motion to adopt the agenda.
It's been moved in second to adopt, adopt the advanced agenda. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, any noes?
I'm sorry, who was the second on that?
I moved.
To adopt.
Right, who was the second? Might have been me. I don't even remember. Thank you.
We are in recess until 6:00 PM.